The time is now seven o'clock. And I'm calling to order and reconvening to open session. The regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District 204 on Monday, December 10th, 2018. Jackie, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carubus?
Here.
Mr. Resak?
Here.
Ms. Peel?
Here.
Mr. Rising?
Here.
Ms. Demming?
Here.
Ms. Grover?
Here.
Ms. Donahue?
Here.
We do have a quorum. Mark, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Today at 7:05, we have to have our 2018 tax levy hearing as dictated by statute and law, so we do have four minutes. So I am going to move to board salutes. Ms. Demming, I think you have a board salute.
Yes. Wabonzi Valley LMC Director Receives STEM Grant. The board salutes Wabonzi Valley LMC Director Kristin Matson, who was awarded a mini grant from Illinois Computing Educators for her project Augmenting STEM with Z-Space. Wabonzi Valley was one of 11 schools in Illinois to receive the award. Congratulations, Kristin.
Thank you. Ms. Donahue?
The board salutes Indian Prairie School District 204 for being one of 373 districts across the United States and Canada that have been selected for the 9th Annual AP Honor Roll. This is the seventh time in nine years that Indian Prairie has earned this honor. The award is based on three years of data and criteria, which includes increased participation by at least 4%, increased or maintained percentage of Black and Hispanic students scoring 3 or greater on at least one AP exam. Honor Roll districts defy the expectation that expanding access automatically results in a decline in the percentage of students with scores of 3 or better. Congratulations to the students and staff at our high schools on this stellar achievement.
Thank you. And Ms. Peel?
The board salutes Hill Middle School teacher Misty Tucker on the upcoming publication of her article, "The Amazon Rainforest," using the C-3 framework to explore complex issues in the peer-reviewed online journal, Middle Level Learning. Congratulations, Misty.
Thank you. And I think those are our board salutes. Since we have less than two minutes, Aria, I'm going to ask you to wait. We have to wait.
We have to wait. Can we play the Jeopardy music now?
We have a lot of people in attendance today.
Yeah.
I can tell our students have fulfilled their required course.
We'll have a new crew in January.
Let the record reflect Paul Gambal has entered the room.
It's a few minutes late.
See what happens when you're not here on time.
Has added you to the agenda.
See what happens if we're stalling to have our hearing. You could take a one-minute stroll to the podium if you wanted to. One minute.
And the time is 7:05. And I'm calling to order the 2018 tax levy hearing. Mr. String.
Good evening, board members. Tonight, we're taking the final step in the process that will result in the extension of our property taxes. As I stated last month, we're in the second year of our new evidence-based funding formula, which to date has improved our position over the previous foundation formula of funding public education in Illinois. The evidence-based funding model is designed that every school district has adequate funds to implement all 27 elements within the next eight years. At the present time, we are 80% funded, or in other words, $78 million short of implementing all of those elements. A number of our comparable districts are funded over 100%. Last year, we finalized a year-long project to engage the community to identify a list of prioritized needs throughout the district. Through this engaged 204 process, eight areas of recommendation were identified for continued improvement. In the coming years, we will continue to address those identified needs. Last month, I also talked to the Board of Education about a property tax relief grant. Under the grant, Indian Prairie 204 would only receive 59% of any property tax abated. The other 41% would need to be absorbed through the districts through cuts to programs or loss in fund balances. With this new information, it's not in our best interest to apply for that grant. Here are the details of this levy. The Illinois School Code gives the authority to school boards of education to levy taxes on real property within the district to support its public schools. This is an annual process that must occur before the end of December. Furthermore, the truth in taxation law provides that a tentative levy exceeds 105% of the previous year's extension, what we actually received, a public notice and hearing are needed before the official levy can be adopted. Since our levy request is less than 5%, we are not subject to the truth in taxation law. We still intended and did follow the intent of the law. Therefore, 20 days prior to the adoption of the levy resolution, the school board estimated and announced a tentative levy in the amount of money that they deemed necessary to be raised by property taxation. This tentative levy was approved by the Board of Education on November 12th. We are recommending to the Board of Education a levy in the amount of $300,965,590, which includes the bonds and interest levy. It's important to note that this is just the request. While it represents a 4.1% increase over the 2017 levy extension, the district is subject to the tax cap legislation. We will not receive 4.1% in increases. In fact, depending on the amount of new property the district should experience, an increase of approximately 3.6% is what I expect in the final extension. The levy calls for a bond and interest tax levy of $26,985,694. The estimated ending bond and interest levy is in accordance with the bonded debt structure, a plan that we put together as a board and an administration several years ago. With the tax cap, the Consumer Price Index has become the critical factor, not the tax rate. The rate is simply lowered or raised by the tax cap formula to obtain the CPI cap, the Consumer Price Index. Tax rates this year will drop as property values have increased both in Will and DuPage Counties. DuPage EAVs have increased by 3.94%, and Will County EAVs have increased by 2.15%. For the 2018 taxes, the average homeowner should experience a 2.1% increase in taxes paid to District 204, the amount of Consumer Price Index. The levy is set at an amount that assures the district will be able to access property taxes from the new property, the new construction in the district. This levy is based on fiscal year 2020 budget forecasts. As I've mentioned in the past, our current projections for fiscal year 2020 suggest increased needs for identified engaged 204 projects and the implementation of the evidence-based funding elements. The estimated increases in property proceeds to the district, the new money that we receive, is $9.5 million, of which approximately $4 million will come from new property. Later in tonight's agenda, I will ask the Board of Education to approve the resolution to adopt the 2018 tax levy.
Thank you. Any questions? I have wondered, did we receive any public comment or written comment? We have not.
No, sir.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, I do need a motion to close the 2018 tax levy hearing.
I make a motion to close the 2018 tax levy discussion.
I have a motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. I don't think we have any discussion. Jackie, please call the roll.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Mr. Resak?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
And now, we can move to our student representative report by Aria Naluri from Niqua Valley High School. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Aria Naluri, your school representative from Niqua Valley. On October 25th, Niqua's Music Department hosted its spooktacular. Thank you to all the members of the community that came out. Niqua Theater held two productions, The Matchmaker and The Trail to Oregon, both great shows. Congrats to the 20 Wildcats and the Class of 2019 that scored a perfect 36 on their ACT. Our red carpet rally recognized the achievements of our fabulous students. Much thanks to Niqua alumni Congresswoman Lauren Underwood for opening the event. With college application season upon us, our counselors have been hard at work to provide scholarship opportunities to make a higher education and affordable option. On November 29th and 30th, Niqua Music Department hosted its annual Gorgeous Crystal Concert. Once again, tickets were sold out all four nights, an incredible performance by over 600 students. Monday, December 3rd, families with 9th, 10th, and 11th grade students attended an academic planning night all about course selection and in-depth help from our guidance team. Thank you to all the parents that came and the students that volunteered. In partnership with the Naperville Community Television Channel 17, Niqua hosted a live taping of Game On, a game show featuring two teams going head-to-head. Eight juniors faced off against eight seniors, and while it was a good fight, the seniors came out on top. Great job Wildcats. Thank you to board members Susan Demming and Lauren Donahue for attending. Thank you to the speech team coaches for hosting the Niqua Valley Speech Team Tournament at Niqua with over 18 teams and 450 competitors. Great job to all the Wildcats that contributed to our annual winter accessory drive. We gather 912 items for those in need. And on that theme, we've kicked off our Alliance for the Children fundraiser to help children within our district across the United States. Already, we have many students willing to help out. Congratulations to the Wirecats Team 2360Z on winning the Design Award at today's Rolling Meadows VEX Robotics Tournament. The team qualifies for the state tournament as well as the U.S. Open. During Computer Science Education Week, Niqua also hosted an Hour of Code event to encourage computer science learning. This year's events saw tons of students come out, and a few lucky Wildcats won a Google Cardboard VR device and a Raspberry Pi computer in a raffle. Congrats to our wrestling team on their recent victories, a great start to this season. And congrats to the girls swim and dive team on their state victory and state championship, a first ever for the program. Congrats to the boys cross-country who won third place at their state meet. And next week, our students will be taking their final exams for Semester 1. Good luck to all Wildcats. And that'd be everything Niqua's been up to lately. Thank you, and again, as always, go Wildcats.
Thank you.
Do you clarify something? How many students did you say got a perfect score on the?
Twenty.
Twenty.
Two zero.
Twenty.
Yes.
That's what I thought you said. Thank you.
Is that like a history-making?
Wow.
It's a lot of students. It's a real lot.
Aria, good luck on your finals, too. Have a good winter break. We do not have any public comment for agenda or non-agenda items, so we now move to our consent agenda and superintendent report. Dr. Sullivan, will you begin with the superintendent report?
Okay, we want to thank those who were able to attend the public open house that the City of Aurora held last week to get comment on their Route 59 corridor study comprehensive plan. The City of Aurora has been meeting with us on this plan, and we are appreciative that they have been reaching out to us. However, I did share with the city officials that evening that I felt that those discussions were misrepresented in the marketing handout that was passed out at the open house in this one. So while we understand the need for a plan for this corridor and especially the Fox Valley Mall area, the implications for the school district must be considered imbalanced. The plan was presented as a draft, and we hope the city will listen to our feedback and that of the community before finalizing the plan and moving it forward through the process. As a school district, we continue to express our concerns about increased student population shifts that may impact school boundaries, or the need for additional classroom space in the north end of our district. And additionally, there are financial implications, that potential economic incentives offered by the city to developers will have on their school district's property tax revenue. And it's important that the board and the community understand these incentives and their implications. And to then end tonight, we have a presentation on the agenda to help us better understand this topic. So at this time of the year, we often have stories about how our students and our communities step up to help others who are not so fortunate. And we'd like to thank all those who contributed to our Adopt a Family program to provide holiday assistance to our 119 homeless families. That's how many we have, which is quite a number. A very special thank you to Niqua Valley Student Council, who made a very generous contribution, as well as the Samaritan Network, who also made a significant contribution. We received additional support from the Indian Prairie Educational Foundation, the Indian Prairie Parents Council, several PTAs and individual families or organizations that provided support as well as our staff. So we're grateful for all the contributions we've received that will help make the holidays hopefully a little brighter for our families in need. But I do have one, I do have to share how one of our staff members, and she happens to be here tonight, Lisa Schwartzberry, Lisa over there, has stepped up. Lisa is our community relations coordinator by day, pastry chef by night and weekend. So Lisa had this idea about making some of her fabulous cookies that we all know, so you have a couple here. She's been taking cookie orders with all of the profits going toward assistance for our homeless families here in District 204. As of today, she has raised just over $2,000. So the snowman and snowflake cookies that you have are her handiwork, and Lisa's truly gone above and beyond. I think we've ordered her to stop, right? Because she's like baking every minute that she's not here at work. But we want to thank Lisa and share our appreciation for her commitment to our families. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
And they're delicious. I already had some of mine.
I'd like to place an order.
No, we've cut them off. We've cut her off.
Thank you. And thank you, Lisa. We now move to consent agenda. I need a motion that the Board of Education approve consent agenda items D through K.
I'll make a motion that the boards approve consent agenda items D through K.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Jackie, please call the roll.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Aye.
Mr. Resak?
Aye.
Motion passes. We now move to our discussion portion, and as Dr. Sullivan stated, we're going to receive an overview of economic development incentives, including TIF districts and abatements.
I think all of you know Eris Dalianis from Francic Rattleit, one of the firms that we use. And Eris has been working with us through this process and answered a number of questions for us, and we thought it would be great to have him come and share some of his knowledge about these kinds of economic incentives with all of you.
Great. Dr. Sullivan, thank you very much. Jay also. So thanks for having me out. Want to take a few minutes to go through a couple of areas that the board should be thinking about with respect to the proposed redevelopment possibilities along Route 59, north and south of the mall. And the first item that has been talked about, at least in a general sense, is the use of tax increment financing. So, you know, what is a TIF district is my question to make sure that you can answer. And it's a very popular economic development tool that's being used statewide, and it's available to municipalities in order to essentially create a fund to do certain types of public improvements, to incentivize development within an area, to pay certain expenses, et cetera. And there has to be a finding that an area is either blighted or it's a conservation area. There's 13 factors we'll take a look at in a minute. And a TIF district lasts for 23 years. So it is a very long-lasting incentive, oftentimes lasting well beyond the tenure of the municipal officials who created it. And I'll talk about some of the implications, but there are significant revenue implications for the taxing bodies, and almost always, it's the schools that have the biggest piece of it that's at stake because your tax rate is significantly higher than any of the other taxing bodies. So how does a TIF work? If you look at the graph that I've got here, at the commencement of a TIF district, the municipality is going to freeze the base assessment for a particular area. So in this slide, the base year EAV is in blue, and then any growth that occurs over that 23-year period is that golden color. And that incremental EAV is only available to the municipality for purposes of extending a tax rate on it. But it's not just the municipality's tax rate that is extended, it's the total tax rate. So it's your tax rate, the park district, the library, and the municipality. Although it's your rate, the dollars don't come to the school district. The dollars go into the tax increment fund to be used for TIF-eligible type of projects. So that's sort of the graphic to keep in mind, and we'll come back to this. There's 13 factors within the TIF Act that have to be considered, and these are the blighting factors. You only need three of the 13 for a finding that an area is a conservation area. You need five of the 13 for blighting. And most communities do not have an area deemed blighted. A conservation area is an area that is threatened with becoming blighted. That's the definition of a conservation area. And you can look at some of these factors, and they're highly subjective factors in terms of whether an area is dilapidated, whether there's obsolescence, whether there's deterioration. A municipality will retain a consultant to make a determination that the factors are present. To the extent TIF financing becomes part of the equation here, I would highly recommend the board would retain its own consultant to, at a minimum, review the municipality's eligibility study, and then also to provide you with sort of unvarnished eyes and ears for the school district on economic development issues. But these are the 13 factors, which obviously, you know, if you read how they are defined within the Act, they're broadly defined, they're broadly interpreted, and, you know, it is oftentimes something that is found without too much trouble if you look at some of these factors. Now, whether that's how it should be interpreted is a different story, but that's how the eligibility study will be prepared for purposes of the municipality. So in terms of finding blight, like I said, three of five for blight, I'm sorry, five of 13, three of five for a conservation area, the factors must be present to a meaningful extent, and they have to be reasonably distributed. And as I mentioned, there'll be a consultant hired for the municipality. You ought to hire one on your own as well. The Joint Review Board is the entity that takes a look at eligibility before the TIF district is created. And the statutory mandate is eligibility, although it's often the case that other issues are discussed as part of the JRB process. The Joint Review Board has 30 days to make a recommendation that an area is either eligible or it's not eligible. If it is unable to make a recommendation one way or the other, it is just deemed eligible. If the JRB fails to decide one way or the other, the presumption is that the area is eligible and that the municipality can move forward with that determination. Now, what's interesting about the JRB is the voting is not based on a weighted, the school district's tax rate represents 50%, the others maybe are 5, 10, 15. It is simply just one of the players. So if there's 10 entities that are part of the JRB, each entity has one vote. So you don't have a representative share of the vote, you have just a vote among the members of the JRB. So that is certainly something that has been talked about as a possible change in the law. If you recall, the General Assembly convened a TIF task force as part of the Education Reform Bill in the fall of '17. That task force met and reported to the General Assembly in the spring of this year, but it's still not implemented in the law. It's a recommendation. And then if for some reason municipality finds that it's not eligible, the JRB and the municipality are supposed to convene for a period of 30 days, go through an interactive process, see if they can work out their differences. If they can't, the municipality can still move forward with the TIF district. So the JRB is very much more of a recommending body as opposed to something that can stop the TIF from moving forward on a formal basis. So let's talk about what are some of the concerns with the TIF district. The first one that I mentioned is simply the length of the TIF. You know, 23 years is a long time, and the likelihood, for example, of any of you still being on the board in 23 years is probably not that great. And the likelihood of, the likelihood of, say, the mayor of a town being in his position or her position is low, that the village manager or the finance person or the economic development person. So there tends to be a core group of people who create the TIF, but over the passage of time, you could have multiple groups that are implementing it, interpreting it, and I'll get to the issue of mission creep in a minute, but that's really what happens. And when I talk about there's a shift in the tax burden across all the communities in your district, here's what I mean by that. When, as that, if you remember the slide with that golden area, the incremental EAV, that is not included in your limiting rate calculation when your rate is calculated. So as a result, you know, if your denominator's a little bit smaller, your overall tax rate's going to be a little bit higher. Now, that higher tax rate is essentially your tax rate funding the TIF portion of the taxes. Now, it's not identified as a separate line item on the tax bill, but that's how it works. And the other part about that is it's not applied only to, say, if this TIF were in Aurora, it would also be applied, that higher rate, to the other communities the district serves. So your Naperville taxpayers would also have a higher tax rate, even though the TIF is not within the boundaries of their municipality. So that's what I'm talking about when I say there are potential revenue shift implications. The other thing is with a TIF, all the growth within that increment is not captured as new property until the TIF district ends. So if a TIF runs for 23 years, the new property that you get the benefit of if there's some new commercial building, an industrial building, a subdivision, whatever the case may be, normally you would get a report from Will County and from DuPage County every year saying, this is the amount of new property. That is excluded from the limiting rate calculation, and there's the opportunity, if the board decides to levy in that way, to capture that additional new property. With a TIF, all the growth is essentially held in abeyance for 23 years. Now, at the end of the 23 years, you do get the new property, and that can be a very positive thing, but there is that 23-year delay. So that's something to think about. I would describe a TIF district as a hidden tax increase because the incremental EAV is excluded from the denominator in the limiting rate calculation over that 23-year period. Like I said, the rate gets bumped up a little bit. So as the increment grows, the enhancement to the tax rate is going to be greater every year. And so those taxes are not going to District 204, they're going to the fund administered by the municipality. So that's just something to be aware of. The other thing is mission creep. And what I mean by mission creep is oftentimes you'll have the core group within the municipality that has founded and created the TIF. So let's say in five to 10 years, those folks are all retired or they're moved on to new positions. There'll be a new administrator, a new CFO, a new economic development person that will look at the TIF and say, hey, what can we do here? You know, how can we spend some of this incremental revenue? Even if perhaps some of the additional initial projects have been completed successfully, you have the likelihood, and I say likelihood because I've seen it happen so many times, that the object of the TIF in year one tends to drift to a broader array of projects if the funds are available in year 10, 15, and 20. So that's just something to be aware of. The other thing that I think you need to be mindful of is, you know, the west side of Route 59 is one community, the east side is another, and you could have what I described as a TIF arms race, where each community is sort of vying with various incentives to induce development and move this entity over here or draw this entity in. So that's just a concern to be aware of. It hasn't happened, but it could happen, given the importance of Route 59 and the fact that you've got different communities on each side. And then the last thing- And then the last thing that would be a concern, or one of the last things, is the fact that the General Assembly will extend the TIF district by up to 12 years. So with the request of the municipality and the consent of all the taxing bodies, so you would have to consent, they can extend it from 23 to 35 years. So that would, in a sense, delay the recognition of the new property from 23 years to 35 years. And that has happened about 160, 170 times in Illinois over the years, where there's been an extension from 23 to 35 years. There is a provision in the TIF Act for the payment of per pupil expenditures for what is deemed a net increase in students. So to the extent there's residential development, and that development induces people to move in who have children that would attend Indian Prairie Schools, there is a component of reimbursement. But as a general rule, it's really grossly inadequate in terms of reimbursement. It's limited by a certain percentage, depending on if it's an elementary, high school, unit district, what your funding level was in the '95, '96 year, those sorts of things. But historically, it's not going to make you whole, let's put it that way.
Did you say what your funding was in the '95, '96 year?
You do. That's what it refers to in the Act, yes.
Seriously?
So, you know, when our clients look at that, they have to do a little historical research to see what they were spending per pupil at the time. So as I mentioned earlier, you know, some of these issues, we can address with a consultant that the board would retain as essentially your economic development person, but, you know, that helps us a little bit. The second incentive I want to talk about, it's a little different than a TIF, is a property tax abatement. So a property tax abatement is something that you would have to affirmatively approve. Unlike a TIF district where you're part of the JRB, you get to participate in the recommendation, even if you think the TIF is a bad idea, the municipality can still move ahead and do it. With a property tax abatement, you must, as a board, affirmatively approve it. Now, there are certain statutory limits. It can be only for up to a 10-year period, and there's a $4 million cap per abatement for all the taxing districts combined. So if every one of the entities participated, your share of, say, up to 4 million would be whatever your share of the total tax rate is. It's much more targeted. It's definitely used for specific projects. I know myself, in the last year, with some of our clients, we've worked on, and I've worked on, a property tax abatement for an extension of 143rd Street in Plainfield. That was just to widen a road and extend it for purposes of a new industrial development coming in that was going to add about 2 million square feet and quite a few new positions. In Orland Park, at the mall there, the Sears stores closed, but they were able to induce Von Mauer to come in by using a property tax abatement. That would be an example. And then also, at Route 55 and Bluff Road, Venture One built several million square feet of industrial space. Those tax abatements for the school districts there were used to improve the interchange and make it suitable for the amount of truck traffic that they anticipated coming in, with some IDOT money as well. So as a general rule, tax abatements are more targeted, you have much more control, the dollar amount is more limited, and the term is more limited. So those are a couple incentives that are very common for both retail, commercial, industrial type of development. One item that's worth mentioning, because it's really not a property tax type of incentive, but municipality can create what's called a business district, where within the business district, they can add up to 1% to the local sales tax rate. So if the sales tax rate is 5%, they can increase it up to 6% in 25-cent increments, and that money is used in a designated area that is part of the business district. So in a development that is going to have a significant component of retail, that would be something that could be done, that would have no adverse effect on the school district, and could provide the municipality with funding for certain improvements. So those, the TIF and the tax abatement are the ones that are going to affect your levy, they're going to affect the taxes you collect, they're going to affect your tax rate over time, they're going to affect your recognition of new property, and ultimately, how the tax burden is borne within the various constituencies and municipalities within Indian Prairie School Districts, so.
Could I just clarify?
Yeah.
Going back to the 1%, you were just talking about with the sales tax, what is that money used for, again, or is it going back to the particular area? Because I think they were talking about this with the Pacific Market.
I think they did.
In fact, they've approved that. So where does that money go back to, that 1%? Does that go back, that additional sales tax revenue go back to the city, or does a portion of that go back to the developer as well?
Well, it's to be used for developments within the area of the business district. So the business district is a defined geographic area, whatever the municipality approves. So let's say it's a 10-acre area, and there's a bunch of stores, it would have to be spent within that 10-acre area.
So for that particular property?
For that particular development, that's correct.
On improvements, or?
Infrastructure, public improvements, incentives for the developer to do certain things, reimbursements. But again, that's sales tax dollars that would have no adverse effect or impact on the school district.
Okay.
So those are really the main things to think about with respect to economic development along Route 59. I know that there are no concrete plans yet, but certainly there is a lot of talk and some draft studies and open houses and things like that. So you just have to be very vigilant and keep an eye on this in terms of whether a TIF is in the offing or a property tax abatement. They both have their pros and cons. Certainly, the abatement is a much more limited type of incentive, shorter-term, smaller amount of dollars, and much more control by the school district.
On the property tax abatement slide, access to new property EAV is available?
Absolutely. Because it's not captured and put into that separate little bucket like a TIF district does, that incremental bucket. So if a development adds $3 million to the assessment rolls, you would immediately recognize the $3 million as new property. Whereas with a TIF, if that same development is $3 million, it's going to sit in the increment, but you'll have to wait 23 years to access it.
Or potentially 35.
If it's extended, yeah, it could be that long, yes.
What's the difference between the conservation and a blighted area? Like, what is the difference in a TIF?
It's a lesser form of impairment on property values and what's going on. So a conservation area is found to be when an area is threatened with becoming blighted. If this is blighting, a conservation area is here, and it's sort of migrating up to blight, but it hasn't gotten there yet.
Is there a difference, is there a difference in the type of TIF, if it's conservation versus blighted?
It is not. The TIF itself, the ordinances the municipality would approve, their ability to access dollars would not change whether they deemed it a blighted area or a conservation area.
And it would last for the same amount of time?
It would still be 23 years. Everything about it would be the same. It's just how do you get to eligibility? Via the conservation area route or the blighted route?
So after 23 years, do they have to do another study, say, if it's blighted or conservation, in order to get the 10 more years, or?
Most municipalities that I've interacted with, and that's been a lot over the years, will do some initial additional analysis. They often don't do a full-fledged eligibility study, but what they will do, and they won't wait till the 23rd year, it might be the 20th year, the 18th, saying, "Hey, we've got some additional projects. We were derailed by the Great Recession." That has caused a number of communities to extend their TIF districts. And they'll say, "Here's what we'd like to do," and they do have to come to you for approval. They do not have to seek eligibility all over again, though.
If the municipality is hiring the consultant, I would just deem that the consultant would kind of go along with what the municipality wants. Is it a certified impartial consultant that's recognized by the state, or how does that work?
There's no state certification or recognition. There's no duty of impartiality. You know, that is, they are hired to evaluate whether a TIF is eligible in that area. And that's why I would recommend you need your own expert, if it comes to it, to make that independent evaluation. We have retained experts for clients many times, and in several instances, defeated the TIF district by just getting an independent person who's acting on behalf of the school district to come in and say, "Hey, wait a minute. There's not dilapidation, there's not obsolete planning. The AV numbers are incorrect." And the municipality will try to push it through the JRB and then lose it to JRB, or it'll be defeated in some other way. So that's really a key thing to do. And any, you know, what we've heard at least, is the plans along Route 59 would not be on a small scale. They would be significant, and the dollars over time would be meaningful. So that type of outside expertise is really important.
So really, with the JR, oops, sorry, with the JRB, with the Joint Review Board, it's just making it essentially a more public process, because ultimately, the municipality can still do whatever they want anyway, as long as they have 3/5ths of vote and not just a simple majority. But since, let me ask you, and I'll let you answer that, but has there been talk in Springfield about looking at TIFs more and have other taxing bodies have more of a say than just a Joint Review Board process? Because it seems like the way Illinois operates and the majority of our revenue comes from local taxes, but we yet have no say on something like a TIF or a tax incentive, that it's really a lose-lose situation for any type of Board of Education.
A TIF district can have an adverse impact on your tax rate, on your overall tax base. It is a recommending body, and if the recommendation is no, the municipality can still move forward. This task force that I talked about earlier, and one of the groups that was active in it was Lend, and I know you guys are a member of Lend, so Lend was involved, and Scope, and EdRed, and a number of the statewide groups, and myself, I was on the task force too. You know, it's only making a recommendation to the General Assembly, and it has not been approved, any of these changes. So there was a package of recommendations to improve the TIF statute and make it a little more even-handed, and those have not been approved yet.
And I guess my fear there is, when I look outside of our area, and I look at the city of Chicago, and knowing that they have 150 TIF districts, but I know you cannot consider the Loop or downtown Chicago blighted in any way, because I think there's eight cranes up in the air right now, as last count. It just has me concerned that blighted, whether it be conservation or blighted itself, is just a very easy process to get through, and that's very concerning.
Yeah, I think, Mark, that is an accurate statement. The bar is very low with these 13 factors, there's no question.
How many people, sorry, how many people make up the Joint Review Board?
It can be anywhere from like eight to 12. So in this instance, you wouldn't have two school districts, you'd have one, because 204 is a unit district, but you would have the Community College, you'd have the library, you'd have the Park District, you could have Township, you would have the county, probably the Forest Preserve. Those would be the key members. But it wouldn't include like a special service area. There's also, the municipality is a member of the JRB, and the municipality gets to appoint what's known as a public member, which is someone who is supposed to live in or near the TIF, and they get a vote as well.
Mr. Peel?
Okay, and the property tax abatement, I had a question about, you said it requires affirmative consent from the taxing district, but you said it would involve more than one taxing district, like the Park District and the School District. So is there any requirement where all of them have to agree, or is it just, can it just be one of the taxing districts agree to it?
Yeah, it can be just one. I mean, ideally, the nice thing about a tax abatement is the municipality has to make the case that the incentive is economically sound, because you would have to, in a public meeting, approve a resolution saying, "We agree to abate X for, you know, maybe 50% a year for five years of a certain, for a certain particular improvement." The extension of a road, you know, putting some turning lanes in. Now, what is often the case is the municipality will not only come to you, but they'll come to the library, they'll come to the Community College, they'll come to the Park District, and they'll say, "Hey, we're talking to everyone, and we would like everyone to be on board." And then they often will agree to participate in the abatement. So you could have four, five, or six entities, and that is not uncommon, but it is not required. It could just be one entity.
Okay. And the other, you said that the tax cap that we currently are under does not apply to the tax rate when you're in the TIF?
Yeah, when it's a TIF district, what the tax cap will do is, one of the deductions from the extension in the denominator is what's incremental EAV, so EAV that's within a TIF district. So by backing that out, you end up with a smaller denominator and thus a higher tax rate.
Mr. Carubus?
What does the homeowner see on their tax bill? Does the homeowner see a tax being paid to the school district? Or does the homeowner, the property owner in the TIF district, do they see a line item for 204, or do they see a line item for Route 59, TIF district?
They will see their normal listing of taxing bodies. So that's why I called it a hidden tax increase, because by sort of baking the higher rate into your tax rate, and the Park District's rate, and the library's rate, the overall rate sort of drifts up over time. And there's no identification on the tax bill, say, on a house somewhere else in Naperville or Aurora or any other community, that says it's slightly higher because of this TIF or that TIF. It just is higher.
A little different question, I think. Does the owner of the property in the TIF, does that owner on their real estate tax bill, usually it lists out payment for city taxes, payment for Park District taxes, schools, does the owner in the TIF district see a line item that's going to the TIF district? Or does the owner in the TIF district see just a line item to the regular municipalities, Park Districts, and schools?
You know, that, and Justin, I don't know definitively, but it's my understanding that county treasurers have the option for properties within a TIF to add a line item showing the TIF amount. And I don't know what the TIF bill would look, what the tax bill would look like. But I know in other counties, that line item is there, but I think it's a county treasurer option item, not a requirement under the state statute.
And can incremental tax revenue in a TIF district be spent on improvements outside the TIF district?
It is, the money is not supposed to be spent on improvements outside the TIF district. Municipality completes an annual report every year that they are required by statute to share with the members of the Joint Review Board. The reports are posted on the state comptroller's website. So if you were to go to Susanna Mendoza's website and look under something called "The Warehouse," you could search any community in the state of Illinois, see if they have any TIF districts, and see how they report it. Now, if a TIF district is contiguous to another TIF district of the same municipality, the monies can be shuttled from one TIF district to another. So if you have contiguity with another TIF, the answer is yes to your question. If there's no contiguity, the answer's no.
So theoretically, there could be a TIF in 204 by Aurora that spends TIF money outside 204?
There is a, there has been litigation on that issue. There's a case that goes back maybe 10 years involving the city of Warrenville and a TIF that overlapped between District 200 and 203. So that is an issue that has created some heartburn over the years.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Do you have to have a Joint Review Board, or can you avoid that and just?
The municipality must convene the Joint Review Board, right. They have to give about 14 days' notice, they have to convene it. They don't have to decide in that one meeting. The JRB can meet multiple times, but within that 30-day period, upon commencement, there's 30 days, they've got to take action. If they fail to take action, the TIF is deemed eligible.
Okay. Where did the 23 years come from? I mean, that's just such an odd number.
That's a great question. It's what the statute says. You know, how they landed on 23, you know, there's probably some great story behind that, which I don't know.
And you can't have a different term?
Let's make it a generation.
Yeah, you can't have a different term than 23 years.
They could make it shorter, absolutely.
No, but right now, you can't do that.
Well, a municipality could agree in the organizational documents that its TIF will be shorter, the 23 years, but, you know, this But, you know, this gets back to the mission creep thing. I've never seen a municipality unilaterally say, "Hey, we're just going to do this one for 15 years." They will say, "We'll do 23, but we'll be done in 15." And then in 15, you know, things could change and maybe it's not done.
Lori, one of the things with the 23 that I thought about, it's almost two generations of students. Kindergarten is K through 12, that's 13 years. So it's almost two different generations. So whether it sounds long or short, two generations sounds long to me.
My last question is, we've heard talk about residential TIF. Is that something that has occurred in the state?
That is something that I am seeing a little bit more of. Now, it happens in a couple of ways. It is not uncommon, if you think about sort of the metro lines that come out of Union Station in Ogilvy Downtown, they pass through a lot of suburbs. So for example, in Uptown Park Ridge, there's a metro station. There's a TIF there that has both commercial, retail, and then residential typically above the commercial, which is for one or two-story construction. You see that in Elmhurst. You see it in Evanston. You see it in Highland Park. You see it in Orland Park. You see it in a lot of towns. That is not unusual. What is unusual, and I've observed of late, are TIFs created for residential development primarily. And that's what is problematic because historically, the act has not been used to incentivize residential development. It's been incentivized commercial and industrial development. So that is a new use of TIF.
That would really hurt. You mentioned that there have been instances where regardless of what the JRB suggests, that they've been able to negate the TIF. So based on what you indicated, the JRB, regardless of what they say, the municipality, it seems could move forward with the TIF. How would, how, when you said sometimes it's been negated, is it just that the municipality all of a sudden says, "Okay, this is the wrong thing" or, I mean, how does?
Yeah, let me give you a good, let me give you an example. So about two years ago, the Village of Hoffman Estates wanted to create a TIF district at Route 59 and 72, which is Higgins Road at the northwest corner. There's about 250 acres, mostly farmland. And the developer had come to the village saying, "We want to create this kind of a walkable dense community." If you're familiar with the Glen in Glenview where the Naval Air Station used to be, it's a lot of walking paths and bike paths and the houses are in small lots and it's very walkable. I think they were trying to do something similar to that. And so in that case, you know, we had a couple of people look at the eligibility study. And at the Joint Review Board, you know, we had shared the findings of our client with the park district, the library, the other entities. And they had shared it with their communities and the consensus was, "This should not be TIF." If they want to develop it, God bless them, but not with a TIF. And so at the JRB, I think there were 11 members and there were two that voted yes and there were nine that voted no. So the recommendation was negative. Based on that and sort of the sense from the municipality that this is, there's no public support for it, they just pulled it. So that's what did it, was the JRB's negative vote and the pressure from the community.
That's what I was going to ask, the community, the JRB discussion and vote is done publicly so that the community has an opportunity to provide their?
And at this meeting, there were probably 100 people that came and 20 of them spoke. It was, it was a very animated process, yeah.
Could you give us some examples of what is, has been a successful situation for a TIF? And then some examples of, I know we have Chicago, but of unsuccessful. Because I'm trying to picture one where a school district would ever feel like this was a good idea.
So I guess to me, a successful TIF would be one that there was legitimate blighting or need for improvement. Like a lot of those factors were present, so it was created for the right reason. The municipality was able to incentivize development and really grow the EAV. And then with that EAV, it was wisely spent with some of the spending to address per pupil increases. And so one example I can give you that I think's worked out pretty well is the city of Park Ridge and their uptown area where the metro station is, the Pickwick Theater, if you know that area. There was quite a bit of residential added. And the IGA there was, addressed the increased student population above and beyond what the TIF act provides. It was an enhanced benefit to the school districts there, 207 and 64, in terms of what they got. So another example, and this one's a little bit different, would be the Village of Rosemont. You know, they have all the convention and hotel, but they have a number of TIF districts and they have worked out a lot of agreements with the schools and the other public bodies as well that have, that have been very positive, I think, undeniably so. You know, I don't want to give negative examples, but I know that there are some. You know, there's a number of TIFs that are created and the increment never gets going. So you've got, it's almost a build it and they will come approach. Like, "We don't have a plan. We don't have a developer. We don't know what the next move is, but we're going to create a TIF district and perhaps that will provide the impetus for development." And in many instances, that has not worked.
There's no restriction on the ability of the district, of the municipality to start another TIF district after the expiration of the 23 years.
And, you know, there are two recent examples that I can give you where a TIF district was closing in on the end of either 23 years or 35 years. And the municipality, near the end of the time period or shortly after the time period elapsed, created a new TIF district in what was very much a similar footprint. Not exactly the same footprint, but included the old TIF district. So in downtown Ma Prospect, and you can read all about this in the Daily Herald, they had a downtown TIF district that ran for about 33 years. And they ended it and then created a new TIF district that, it's called the Maine and Prospect TIF District, but there was actually litigation in that one. I'm aware of that one happening. And then currently, the city of Elmhurst had a TIF that they ended and then created a brand-new TIF over much of the same area. Again, not exactly the same footprint, but there was a lot of similarity in the properties within each one. So to your question, Justin, can it be done? It can be done. Now, a couple little footnotes there. One is, they have to establish eligibility for the successor TIF. They have to go through the exact same process, you know, looking at the factors, convening the JRB, et cetera. The other thing is, IASBO did introduce some legislation that has gone nowhere, but at least it's out there. It's saying that if you end a TIF, you cannot for a period of 15 years put a new TIF in place. That was part of the recommendations this past spring for the TIF task force. But like I said, none of those have been adopted at this point.
I'm going back to your example where you said that, a good example where they put in money or incentives or whatever to go back to the school district. So are you saying part of that yellow, part of the under the curve could be indicated to be, go back to the school district?
I agree with you, yes. Yeah, I mean, the municipality, and in these cases where there are some return of funds, it's typically by an intergovernmental agreement. And in those cases, there's some type of formula to determine what the payment should be. Now, even with a good IGA, you know, it's still probably not as good as not having a TIF district at all because you are not getting all the revenue. You'd be getting a portion of the revenue.
Anybody else? Are we at the position of directing the administration to start looking for a consultant? Or are we not at that point?
I don't think we're at a point to hire a consultant yet, but to at least begin to have some, to at least know where we can go in case we get to that point.
Does administration need direction to hire a consultant?
Well, I guess that's what we're talking about. Are we at that point? Do we need to begin to pursue it or look at it if we do need one?
Things can move really quickly, can they not?
They can, yeah.
So I would say administratively, our feeling is we should be ready to go with someone should we need it because they can move very quickly.
And I have a few names.
We're not going to have time to pause.
Right, of people I've worked with that I can recommend to Dr. Sullivan and Jay, who are very effective and a lot of experience. And I'm sure there's other good ones out there. There's the three or four that I know that have been very helpful over the years.
So my thought process on that is, is that I hope that we continue to have productive collaborative conversations with the city of Aurora. But at the same time, I took a note to be a steward of our district and I think it's only prudent that we hire and have somebody at our disposal in case things do move quickly. But I'm hoping we can continue those conversations with the city.
And that's the way to approach it, I think, yes.
And I would say, for me, I don't know whether hire, at least know, at least have a recommendation to know where we would want to go if we need to hire.
You said that they can convene a JRB though in 14 days, right? So we'd have to have, we'd have to have someone work with us before that meeting would happen.
You would, you'd want someone ready to go to look at the report once it's issued. If TIF is where things are headed, absolutely.
So we're looking into this, correct?
We will, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Aris.
You're very welcome, folks. Have a good meeting.
Next discussion item is Portrait of a Graduate.
Good evening, everyone. I think this is a little bit of a lighter topic for this evening. I'm excited to come back to you and talk to you a little bit about the Portrait of a Graduate work. Was here a little bit earlier when we were just at the beginning stages. And tonight, we'd like to celebrate and share the work of the Portrait of a Graduate design team. We'll take, I'll take questions throughout the evening because we have a really nice conclusion coming and so we want to make sure we have all of your questions answered by then. This does relate to Board Policy 610, which we will be revisiting a little bit based on what we've decided we want for our students. So I'll look for that in the coming months, some revisions to that policy. I'd like to start by thanking both Janet Buleo and Lisa Berry Schwartz, Lisa Schwartzberry, for their work on this and their help and support, their organization, their time, their ideas and those kinds of things. We could not have made it through this without them. And then Batel for Kids is the group that we consulted with. And Mike Nicholson helped us throughout and was our facilitator throughout each of these meetings to help us get to where we are, as well as our entire design team, which we will recognize in another slide. So as we started this mission, we were looking for an inclusive, local, and thorough school-community process that identifies and prioritizes the competencies desired in all students by the time they graduate to enhance their chances of success now and in the future. And as we talked before, that now and in the future was very important to the group, really looking at what we want for our students today and the activities that they'll be participating in right now, as well as in their future. So this is our Portrait of a Graduate design team. We'd like to thank all of the members who took the time and were there. We have three here this evening. We have Mike Purcell, Rob Maldonado, and Paul Gamboa, who joined us and were big contributors in helping us reach some conclusions. And this is a diverse group of people within the community, as well as within the school system, nonprofits, higher education, that brought different perspectives to the conversation and as well as their passion for students and their students' futures. So we'd like to really thank them for their time and effort. This slide, we talked to you about before. These were the four meetings that were proposed and we followed this guide fairly closely. We started with the first meeting with really familiarizing the whole group with what the process was going to be, what the project entailed, as well as the shifts in the workforce that were coming in the future, as well as we're starting now. And familiarize them with the competencies that were available for us to prioritize. Then in meeting two, we took some time to prioritize those competencies and really looked at trying to build some consensus around what were five to six of those that we felt were most important for our students as we worked in their, for their education. And then in the third one, we started to develop that graphic between, really at the second one, but more into the third one, we looked at, based on those competencies, how did we want to display? And how did we want, what visual did we want to represent what we believe for our students? And this was a very interesting conversation, as well with some, even some activities. Some people were acting out what we wanted for our students and those kinds of things. So it was a great deal of fun and we appreciate the board's input. I think most of you were able to attend a meeting or two to understand how one of these processes went and provide some input and to get a glimpse at to what the conversations were. Because the journey was really about those important conversations. We ended up with a great graphic and some wonderful competencies that will help support our students, but the conversations were very important for us to really build consensus and to understand what our community and our educators wanted for our students. And then between the third and fourth meetings, there was a community survey that was sent out to our staff members as well as parents. And then I think it was available for even some of our community members who did not have students. And we brought that data back along with our final look at our competencies, as well as our graphic to meeting four. So that meeting was about wrapping things up and really looking at what consensus we had, what things could we use to move forward and then to celebrate the great work that was done by this whole design team. So at the end, we decided on three areas for development, the heart, will, and the mind. And under the heart, the competencies that were identified as priorities were creativity and innovation, as well as communication. Under the will, we had flexibility and adaptability, as well as resilience. And for the mind, critical thinking and problem-solving, and then citizenship. So the group reached consensus on these after much discussion and really looking at what did they mean to us. For instance, I think citizenship was one that we had a great deal of discussion about because people tend to think of that as voting. And do you vote? Do you work for your elected officials? But really citizenship encompassed a lot more than that. Really looked at service opportunities, understanding how things work and being a part of how those things run and providing your input into, and your ideas into how government entities work, as well as how school systems and things like that work. So we moved from these and then looked, this is at the time when we provided the survey to the community. And we had a, we had a good response from our community. As you can see, the green area, may not be able to see the legend from here, but that makes up our parents and guardians. And the purple area really looked at certified staff. That includes counselors, psychologists, social workers. So staff within our buildings that chose to provide their input into this. Some of the other smaller areas that you may see are administrators, support staff, a small area of students. We also provided that for students, as well as community members with families that do not attend our schools. So we had a good number of respondents and the results from that were a large number in agreement. So if you can see that, that is about 91%, I'm going to round up, in agreement that said, "Yes, these were very important for our students and they agreed that our priorities were in line with what their thinking was." We had some that were uncertain, about 6% and about 4% that said, "No, these were not the competencies that they would have chosen." When we looked at the comments surrounding this, some of them came from a lack of understanding about the definitions of what some of the competencies were. So some of them may have had a different interpretation of what that competency meant. Some of them asked, "What does this mean?" So really looking at what are some of those definitions, which lead us to know that when we start to present this, we'll have to make sure that we provide definitions for our community as to what we may? community as to what the, we mean by those competencies. And then, some centered around content. So, we say all these skills, but where's the content? We still need students to understand and memorize some facts or have some dates, but have that understanding of some of that history or some of that knowledge about math problems and things like that. So, we took that into consideration as well.
So, maybe it's too early to ask, but like, three years from now? Because this takes time to share this information, not only with parents, but with staff and our students. Three to five years from now, how do you see these competency and all this work driving practice?
Well, I think it's-
What's going to be different?
I think in some ways, it already does. I think our staff has already started on some of this work. You know, we've been talking about Future Ready and had the hashtag #FutureReady for a couple of years now. So, I think we've already started along this path with adjusting the mindset of what students will need to know as they move forward. I think the continued education of what the workforce is going to look like, as well as what students, what life will look like. You know, we don't know if they're, what kind of cars our students will drive. We don't know, you know, my two-year-old grandson talks to Alexa. We don't know if they're going to have to look up any questions or things like that. So, really, our staff has already started thinking about what this means. This will help us also to communicate why we're making adjustments in how we instruct and what we instruct for our parents, so that they can understand how that connects to the workforce and for the future and, and build that understanding. It's very interesting, because I gave the district SEL committee a sneak peek, they were here on Friday, and showed them our graphic, which I'll share in just a minute. And they already saw all the connections to the competencies that are within SEL. So, it fits with a lot of the work that we're doing in SEL, as well as-
Social, emotional.
Oh, sorry. Social, emotional learning, sorry. It fits within social, emotional learning, that we've already started some of that work. It fits within, you know, when we look at our equity work. It fits within our, when we look at our flexible delivery of instruction, of how we're helping students learn in different environments with different types of instruction. So, I see it fitting and coordinating and bringing all of those pieces together within the next three years, but I think it, some of that work has already started.
Kathy, I know one of the, you indicated that we had some not-for-profit personnel, but one of the good things is that we have actual practitioners that were also included as part of the, of the team. So, people who, we had corporate personnel-
Absolutely.
And, and then personnel who are also very involved in helping to link what businesses are looking for as they look to help hire and employ different personnel. So, some of those persons who are actually in the practice were involved in this process. So, that's important for the community to know as well.
It is important, and it was great, because we made some good connections. So, some of the folks that came and helped us do this work wanted to continue to work with us. So, you know, how can I bring some of your students into my company? In fact, you helped us connect with someone. And how can I bring the work that we're doing in here so that we can start to build that partnership and that we can see these things come to fruition? So, it was, our community was very supportive, and some of these businesses will continue to partner with as we move forward.
And that was very nice to speak, since we're already, you know, one of the conversations that we've had is beginning to provide internship, and this particular employer, who's in the STEM field, wanted to, after this particular presentation, she wanted to know, wow, I'd love to be able to look at having some students within the district, learn more about our company and that type of, that type of thing, so.
And part of the survey also looked at where did they see these competencies being important for students. Overwhelmingly, it was in their work in personal life, then civic life, and then some other areas. But they affirmed for us that these competencies are not only important, but they're important for our students, for their future work, as well as their personal life. And when we look at supporting the whole student, those two are very key pieces. We want to make sure that they're, we have them ready for work, but we also really want to make sure they have the skills that they need to be successful in whatever they choose in their personal life as well.
Did they pick the competencies, or did they choose from a category? Or did they come, come up with it on their own?
The design team?
No, the competencies, like you have creativity, communication, flexibility. Was that something that the people, the study group came up with, or did they choose-
We had a list that we went through, that, that our consultant helped everyone to understand. We first went through the shifts in the workforce and then looked at what would some of those competencies be? And so, then we surveyed the, the participants, and they ranked where they thought that those fit. After a long-term, lot of discussion about what did they mean and how did they translate into education and into work, then we let, we had them discuss at their tables and tell us their priorities, but then we allowed them or gave them the opportunity to do it on their own. So, each individual team member went through and ranked their competencies from a list.
My observation of it was very interactive, very thoughtful, had time between meetings to think and rethink the competencies. And I really thought they, a very diverse group came to consensus. That was my observation of what I saw occurring.
And very willing to talk. We didn't have to probe any group to get conversation going, so it was, we were very pleased about that.
And you also included students, too. We had students from each, multiple students from each high school.
Mm-hmm. They had very valuable perspectives as well. So, are you ready? Here it is. Voila. Ta-da. This is the graphic. As you can see, the competencies are around the circle, and with the middle representing all three of our high schools, with the collaboration and the consistency, consistency between the three represented with the yellow hats. Our high schools represent all of our-
Gold.
Or gold, I'm sorry. Gold graduation caps.
Don't call them yellow.
We know that our high schools represent all of our schools, so the work from pre-K, we had pre, we had preschool teacher on our, in our design team, all the way up through high school are represented within this graphic. You can see that the competencies are around it and across, kind of a bridge between all those competencies is that knowledge piece. We know that that was important, not only to some of our design team members, but also to our community, that we, we still recognize that there, there's content that students need to learn in order to be successful with these competencies. So, and how to use these competencies in order to help instruct the students so that they gain this needed knowledge throughout. With that being said, as we move forward, as I said, we already started to share this out a little bit. We started with our district's social, emotional learning group, but we'll start to share some of this out. I think Janet has a press release ready to go, and we'll connect this to all of our work. So, especially with the curriculum and instruction team, we'll help folks see how the work that we're doing, our tech team, everyone, how that connects to these skills and the work that we've already started, but also the work that we'll continue to move through. This will be our foundation for that, and all of that work will then stem from these competencies, as well as that knowledge. Any other questions that I can answer before we get to the, to the finale?
I just love, I just look forward to us rolling this out. I mean, a lot of it is what I see in the four Cs. You know, we always talk about in education, but I think, much like our mission and our goals as a district, I think, you know, we can start talking about this and people can start, whether it's students or parents, they just all become familiar. When we talk about the Portrait of a Graduate, everybody kind of learns what that is and what that means to 204. So, I look forward to it, and it was an incredible group of people that we gathered. I just, I'm still just blown away by the people that we got from the community and students and parents and that type of thing, so, great job.
We're really grateful for everyone's participation.
It was, you know, engagement of our community at its best. It really was very representative, so I really want to thank that group once again, those that are here. Spent a lot of time, they spent a lot of effort, and they worked really hard, really hard.
Is this, is this something you are thinking of implementing in middle school? Or in kindergarten, or?
Pre-K, all the way through, although, as long as we have students, this will be something that will be our focus for them. So, as I said, we did have a preschool teacher as part of our design team, who was very influential and had some great ideas as part of this. So, we tried to make it an inclusive group, so that everyone felt and saw where they fit in to, you know, when you think of Portrait of a Graduate, you just think of high school, but truly, that the work in these competencies and gaining these competencies really starts at the very beginning. And so, you know, it's a very systemic approach to that. So, we wanted to make sure that everyone saw themselves in this work.
Anything else? Thank you so much.
All right, one more thing.
And thank you to the group. Oh, we got to last.
This is the finale. Thank you to Clayton and Janet for, and Lisa for this.
Portrait of a Graduate is a process where you envision the aspirations that we all have for our students as they leave any and every District 204. So, it's bringing together a community of stakeholders to talk about what skills and competencies our students need, so that they'll be ready for college, career, life, whatever path they choose. The design team is really made up of two pieces, the district side and then the community side. We wanted a really broad representation, so that we would have varying perspectives that would come to the table to help us envision this portrait. The first thing we did was really centered on the why, why this was important.
I think it's important for us to evaluate how we do things, to make sure that our kids, when they exit our school system, are prepared for whatever jobs might be there in the future.
There's nothing more important than education, we know that. What is the path of education that you want to take? And what I love about Portrait of a Graduate is that it doesn't matter what path you take, it's the qualities that you take into that path.
It was overwhelming at first to look at, you know, all the different options that we had and narrow down to, what are the five or six things that we think are most important? We focused on things that help people work together and solve problems.
And together, we have created this, this list of skills that we believe are vastly important, no matter where you go in life. We have creativity and innovation. We have communication, the ability to be flexible and to adapt. We have resilience, critical thinking skills and problem-solving. We also talked about citizenship. What does it take to be a good citizen, to be involved in your community? It doesn't matter where you go, those are all vital skills to be a successful human being.
I think many of those skills and competencies that our design team has discussed are things that our teachers are really currently working on with our students. But it really will give the district a framework and some focus, so that we can ensure that all of our students have the opportunities to cultivate these competencies.
Well, 204 has given me so many awesome learning opportunities. You guys gave me a place where I could share my opinions about the things that we're learning in school and give awesome feedback. I think for sure they're preparing me very well for graduation and anything else after that.
We know we have to prepare all of our students for whatever path they choose. And we can't really know what the workforce needs are going to be in 20 years. So, it's really important that in addition to strong academic foundations, that our students are prepared for this, you know, more rapidly changing world that we're entering into.
That was well done.
Yeah. Special thanks to Clayton and Janet. That was beautiful.
Kind of made me cheer up a little.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, it's time to stop crying and time to approve. The 2018 tax levy resolution. Do I have a motion to, that the Board of Education approve the tax levy resolution?
I move that the Board of Education approve the 2018 tax levy resolution.
Second.
Any questions? Comments? Hearing none.
Got to approve it before we lose it, right?
Jackie, please call a roll.
Mr. Carubis?
Yes.
Miss, I'm sorry, Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Mr. Razak?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Aye.
Motion passes. Yes. Then, finally, the Board of Education update. I don't have much. I do want to wish all our high school students good luck with their finals. Want to wish our parents and our district and our entire community a well-deserved winter break, especially with our teachers, staff, students. They've worked very hard, and I hope that they have a restful and safe winter break. So, that's all I have. Anybody else? With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
On favor?
Aye.